All right, welcome everyone to the Placerville City Council meeting for January 23rd, 2024. We all, I know, I don't have a hammer, they took it away. Everybody rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, let's move on to number two, roll call.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Here.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Here.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Here.
Mayor No?
Here. Okay, we have no ceremonial matters today. We did not meet in closed session, so we don't have a closed session report. Brings us to adoption of the agenda.
I'll move to adopt.
Second.
I have roll call.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye. Okay, number six, announcements and presentations to the public. 6.1, receive an update from the Placerville Fire Safe Council. Mr. Akuna.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Nothing like being first up. A pleasure to see all of you this evening, and congratulations to our new mayor and our vice mayor. I certainly look forward to seeing your leadership in the city in the coming year. Thank you for stepping up, Mr. Clarici, is non, great recognition. Good evening, my name is Mark Akuna, I'm here tonight representing the Placerville Fire Safe Council, and I'd like to just give you a brief update on this year's Placerville Wildfire Safety Day event. Our planning is nearing completion. We are looking forward to holding the event this year at March 23rd, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at 681 Main Street, or Midtown Mall, same location we were at last year. Opening ceremony invitees at the moment include Supervisor Thomas, Assemblyman Patterson, and State Senator Alvarado Gill. And I'd like to take a moment to formally invite our mayor and vice mayor and city manager, Mr. Morris, to be a part of the opening ceremony. And that'll be at 9:00 o'clock on Saturday, the 23rd. The Fire Safe Council is posting a schedule of events that should be posted in February, and we hope that this will allow everybody a chance to plan which times that they would like to stop by and see the presentations and the various speakers. This year, we have three speakers. They will be Dan Bolster, from Eldorado County Transportation Commission, and he'll be updating the community on the preparedness planning efforts that have been going on now for well over a year, or two years, until we're anxious to see what he has. Alan Thompson will present again, he's from the Neighborhood Radio Watch Group and our local amateur radio club. He has extremely interesting information and presentations on how our cell systems will fail in an emergency, and some excellent examples of what we can do to get around that problem. So looking forward to hearing from Alan. And then, as we had last year, we will have a representative from the State Insurance Commissioner's office, who will be able to provide us with the latest challenges and issues that are facing all of us as we try to insure our homes. And in addition to our speakers, each hour, we will have a wildfire simulation table, or as I like to call it, the Burning of Placerville. We will have the realistic wildfire impacts on both the north and south neighborhood, and this year, we will be sure to have that table set up so that the viewing is greatly improved, and I'm confident that folks will be actually able to video the presentation so it'll help spread that message of what could happen, both with and without our clearing and our remediation work. So we're looking forward to that. This year, our outdoor display is going to include more of a hands-on demonstration with members of the Eldorado County Fire District, helping us with the thanks of Chief Cordero and his staff. I want to create an interactive, actually pump some water and learn what our fire district uses as their wildfire fighting techniques and equipment. So that'll be outside, weather permitting. As I told Chief, if it floods, we can always switch to bilge pumps and boat rescue. We'll be out there one way or the other. I would just like to say that the cosponsorship with the city allows us to reach a much larger number of our residents. Our goal is to exceed 500 visitors on the 23rd this year. Also, thanks to the generous cooperation between the various agencies, we will be publishing in the local free newspapers, like the Clipper and the Gold Panther, a full-page ad that while it does feature the Placerville Fire Safe Council and all the requirements, it is a huge outreach to everyone in the county, because we all know that a fire can come from any direction. So let me close with again thanking all of the agencies that have joined in the effort this year for the third time, and I'd like to come back next month to discuss that in more detail. And on behalf of all the members of the Placerville Fire Safe Council, I want to thank you for your time and your support. Do you have any questions?
Questions from the council? No? No, very exciting, and thank you for all your efforts on that. I know it's a lot of planning and a lot of meetings and a lot of coordination, and we really appreciate all your efforts.
We appreciate your, thank you very much.
Okay, do we have any questions from the public? Since we have the expert here? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. I do want to make an announcement from the League of Women Voters. Their 2024 Candidate Forums for the Board of Supervisor is next Wednesday, January 31st, at 7:00 p.m. here at Town Hall, and I believe there are flyers on the back table. All right, great. Then we will have 6.2, brief comments from the City Council. Nicole?
I have none tonight.
John?
Me neither.
David?
I have none.
Michael?
Just quickly, and I guess I'll do it now, since people are actually here, is I was sworn in as Secog Chair on Thursday of last week, so it's the first time Placerville will be chairing Secog, which is a six-region transportation or this council of government for the six counties in our area. So very honored to be in that role, and looking forward to doing that, and how I can help Placerville and Eldorado County in that.
Congratulations, Michael.
Thank you, thank you. And that's it.
Great, thank you. All right, we will move on to seven, the consent calendar. We are going to poll 7.7 and 7.9. Okay. All right, is there any council member who would like to pull any other items? No? Okay, we'll open this up to public comment. Seeing none, we will bring it back, and...
I'll move the agenda, or the consent?
With the polled items?
With the polled items.
Okay, I will second that.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye. Okay, this brings us to number eight, public comment, non-agendized items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. State law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the city council under specific circumstances. The mayor reserves the right to limit speakers' time to three minutes. You are not allowed to make personal attacks on individuals or make comments which are slanderous or may invade an individual's personal privacy. We'll open that up to the public. Do we have any public comments?
Good evening, Mayor No, and members of the council. Kathy Lishman, Placerville resident. At the last city council meeting in the ADU discussion, the topic of short-term rentals came up. Although it was not on the agenda, the council made a motion to ask staff to prepare an ordinance in the next 90 days. Since it was not an agenda item, was the council allowed to do that, or was it a violation of the Brown Act? It seems the council is being pressured by a handful of people who either currently have an illegal short-term rental or want to create one. The issue is not about your friends or the people you know, it's about the community in our neighborhoods. Before you give direction to staff, it's important to get input from the residents. The residents should have a say in lodging facilities in their neighborhood. Getting input from the community after the ordinance is written and scheduled for a public hearing at the Planning Commission is counterproductive. Allowing the public to comment before staff is directed to write the ordinance makes so much more sense. Perhaps you could put a notice in the water bill announcing a meeting scheduled for public input. You could include a questionnaire in the notice. Are you aware of any short-term rentals in your neighborhood? Is allowing homes in your neighborhood to be used for short-term rentals a good idea or a bad idea, and why? Instead of asking staff to develop a short-term rental ordinance in 90 days to make the illegal ones legal, staff should be asking the public for input, as well as enforcing the ordinance we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Good evening, thank you for our time to chat with you, and again, I'm talking to the issue that Kathy mentioned, and it's not the procedural issue that I'm as concerned about as the policy. Because first of all, I want to explain, I'm Frank Porter, I'm with Housing at Eldorado, as you well know. You've supported our efforts to help address the needs of homeless, and also the need for affordable housing in our county and our city. And the two issues are linked like this. We have people in our county, both from very low income, low income, and people in that 80% to 120% of median income, who are struggling to find housing that they can afford. We have employers in our county and your city who struggle to find employees who can live here and not have to commute long distances. 51% of the county's employees live outside of the county. Now, some of that is by choice, but a significant part of it is they can't find housing. Now, to the credit of the city council, you've had good housing policy. You've worked really hard with your housing element, and you've implemented it, and you're building low and very low-income housing. You also have a huge gap, because I studied the data, not as much as Pierre does, but probably almost as much, but you have a huge gap in that 80% to 120%, 140% of median income, of people who can find affordable housing, workforce housing, the people that live and work here, not the people that are passing through as tourists. So your consideration of some policy to expand short-term rentals is running contrary to good policy about meeting the housing needs of the people who live and work here. Because what happens is, you're encouraging speculators to buy up properties and convert them into essentially, we all know it, VRBO and Airbnb rentals, which are more lucrative. They are very lucrative. But it is bad policy, because what it does is it turns your town into a tourist spot and creates neighborhoods that are now occupied by short-term rentals, folks, rather than permanent residents. It also makes it harder for people to find housing. So I would urge you to really study this carefully, think about it. I think you will find many jurisdictions around the state, and around the country, and actually around the world, are really pulling back on their policies concerning short-term rentals. They are restricting it because of this very problem. So we don't have that big problem right now, you would be creating that problem, in my view. So with that, I hope you'll weigh that carefully. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Frank.
My name is Brad Kane, I'm the Director of Finance and Administration with Pioneer Community Energy, and I'd like to tell you a little bit about Pioneer Community Energy tonight. Pioneer Community Energy is a locally-owned, not-for-profit electricity provider. We serve Eldorado and Placer Counties, the cities of Auburn, Colfax, Lincoln, Placerville, Rockland, and the town of Loomis. We also are very proud to add Grass Valley and Nevada City to our service territory effective this month. As a reminder, we supply electricity, indicated as generation, on customers' bills, but gas, transmission, and the distribution costs of that electricity still come from PG&E. Pioneer has been serving the region for five years, and the focus of our board and leadership is on ratepayer savings, resulting in more than 85 million in customer savings since 2018. In December, our governing board, which is comprised of representatives, excuse me, from each of our member agencies, including Councilmember Yarborough, approved Pioneer rate changes that support a 19% discount for the city of Placerville and all of Eldorado County compared to PG&E's generation portion of the bill for 2024. This will result in approximately 41 million in ratepayer savings in 2024 for customers in our territory. A household in Placerville with an average electricity usage, assuming 650 kilowatt-hours per month, will save roughly $262 per year with Pioneer. We encourage customers who previously chose to opt out of Pioneer to re-enroll to benefit from the additional savings on electricity we offer. And to learn more, you can go to pioneercommunityenergy.org. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Kane.
Hi, my name's Mac, I'm a resident of Placerville. One of the first things I want to do is commend the council for organizing, I don't know what we call it, the building department and council getting together, bringing in an expert, and talking about building codes and what the historic districts were about, what was possible, what was not possible, et cetera, et cetera. It was incredibly important, incredibly informative for someone who lives in one of the historic districts. Not only for myself, but I was able to explain to a lot of my neighbors what was being talked about, how this came about. I had no idea why downtown was not part of the historic districts, it was because the owners of those buildings didn't want to be part of that. And the last time this was visited was 1981, which seems like a long time ago, even for me. Anyway, I just thought that it was a wonderful situation, and it seems to me that it would apply very neatly to the situation of talking about short-term rentals versus what rentals are available, how, you know, who has resources for landlords, absentee landlords, et cetera, et cetera. So I would encourage the council to consider perhaps putting something together very similar to that in regards to the rental situation. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Matt, Mac. All right.
Hi, Sue Rodman, Placerville resident and member of the Measure H, Measure L Committee. I hope everyone got their annual report in their water bill that says what Measure H and Measure L have accomplished this year. And I think that our engineering department is to be applauded. The total revenues that came in were pretty nice, and the total that we spent in the city was almost $20 million. And then, what we were able to do, what our engineering department was able to do, was to use the funds that came from Measure H and Measure L as matching funds to get another $8 million in grants to work on our streets and pipes. So that's almost 30% of the total that was spent in the city. There's almost $28 million benefit into the city between the Measure H, Measure L, and the grants. And about 30% of that is from grants, and I think that our engineering department did a fantastic job chasing down these grants. And we did a good job as taxpayers here to make sure the matching funds were available so that we could get, so that we were eligible to receive those grants. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else? Okay, we will close public comments. I wanted to address, really quick, the AD... Oh, oh, sorry, okay.
Is this open to public comment, or is it just on the housing?
This is a non-agendized item, so anything not on the agenda.
Okay, sorry, yeah, I was multitasking. Hi, I'm Tammy Dans, I live by the mosquito bus station. I just have a couple of issues to come, to bring to, well, it's already to your attention. The homeless issues, obviously, well, it's not seasonal, but in the wintertime, it's definitely worse. I have some pictures that I'd like to share with you guys, if I can hand it, just some of the typical stuff that's happening ongoing, on weekly basis. If you have any questions, I'll let you know there. Anyways, what I'd like to see done is maybe more patrols happening. I highly suggest that we work on a better camera system there, and I know that's probably through the transit, but you guys also, Parks and Rec also maintain it, but somehow we need to work together. We now know where the hotspots are, we need to have cameras facing the bathrooms, so you guys can see who's going in the bathrooms, who's destroying the bathrooms, who's leaving, you know, illegal human waste dumping outside of the building, you know, vandalism. I think we need better signage that states when people should be, can be there and can't be there, because it's really hard with the PD to support when there's not like a sign that states a time. It does state no overnight parking and a time limit on that, but it doesn't give you any other times. And there's no more buses after 7:30, so I don't know why anybody is allowed to be there all night, you know? And I understand when it rains, but still, you get a green light one time, they all think it's green. It doesn't, you know, and so it's just hard to deal with. I'll kind of like button up on that one. And then the lighting, the new lighting's better. It is still definitely an inconvenience. The lights here on Main Street, if you look at those versus what's in the parking lot, these don't burn your eyes or hurt your eyes. You go to where I'm at, even though the new lights are there, they're blinding, you cannot stare at them. And there are dimmers on there, they're up to eight levels, and they're on a default eight, which is 100% aluminum and 100% wattage, and they go all the way down to one, to 19% and 16%. There are some shields on some of them, I believe, they really, there's three of them that totally affect my life. They could be adjusted, which I would really appreciate. My whole backyard's lit up like a Christmas tree, you know, and, yeah. Or umbrellas, that's the only thing I can think of, you know, the domes that go over them, but I know you guys aren't going to spend any more money on those. And though, real quick, the bike lockers, they gotta go. I think PD supports me on that, I know you guys are working hard on it, it's just a magnet, and, thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Okay, anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Teresa Brown, and I'm here representing a committee that's been newly formed, called, we have named ourselves the Placerville Adult Softball Committee. I'm here to represent the group and introduce ourselves so that you know that you have a liaison to talk with as you're working through problem-solving for Parks and Rec, and we are here to have conversations with anybody that would like to. Nothing specifically that I'm here to address or bring forward, but more of just for you to know that we are out here and accessible, and we are here to listen to the proposals that you have tonight, which is really exciting, honestly, to hear that there's some movement happening for these softball fields that are very much in need of tender-loving care, and for us to be able to continue playing out there. It's such a joy, and such a community-building activity, family-focused, and we want to be able to help. So, again, I'm here to introduce myself, another representative here, and do we have a means of contact at this point, or would that be through Parks and Rec? So, to get ahold of us, you can find us through Parks and Rec. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, all right, we will, oh, one more?
Hello, hi, council, sorry I'm late, I couldn't find any parking out there. This is a general public comment, right?
Yes, it is.
All right, well, on that note, I couldn't find any parking, and I'm here to speak on the general overdevelopment that's going on in this region, and the several agenda items here tonight that really shouldn't be there. This city council and this city has proven for a long time now that you really want to take the beauty of this area and develop it for profit, and I'm here to stand against that. My name is ABG, I'm on the ballot for state assembly this March, and I'm not here as a candidate today, I'm here as a resident of the neighboring Placer County, where I've witnessed the effects of overdevelopment up close and personally. You can't get onto my highway, Highway 65, without almost being in a car accident anymore. That is headed this way, to the people of Eldorado County and to the people of Placer County, and I think that's sick, I really do. And I'm really fed up with it. I'm tired of people in elected office believing that the answer to traffic problems that you allowed in the first place, by allowing the overdevelopment of this area, you think the answer to that is to destroy the heritage of this town and to build apartments on top of history. Well, we, the people, will not allow you to do that. We will not allow you to build apartments on top of history. So I'm here to defend the people who aren't able to be here every day, who aren't able to speak up, because they are fed up as well. And so I couldn't find parking outside. The answer to that is not destroying buildings in Town Hall and building apartments on top of them, the answer to that is not building new parking lots, the answer to that is stopping the overdevelopment of this region and protecting the heritage that exists and makes Placerville a great place to live and a great place to visit. And that's what I wanted to make my thoughts known on today. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Okay, we will close public comment and bring it back. I did just want to make a comment on the ADUs. We agreed to have that conversation in the future, and we had it on the business districts, and we haven't had it in the residential districts. We weren't directing staff to do anything in particular but start and have that conversation, and then bring something back to council. On the legality of that, I'll let our attorney speak what we did last meeting.
Sure, thank you, Mayor No. There was no Brown Act violation. The council is permitted to provide brief responses to public comments, which it did, and the council may also direct staff to bring back agenda items for future council meetings, and that's exactly what this council did. There was no discussion and no action taken on that item.
Great, thank you. Okay, with that, we will move to 8.2, written communications.
There were no written communications, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right, item nine, items pulled from the agenda. We will start with 7.7.
And I will take that one.
Okay.
Mayor No. The item before you is consideration of a resolution approving the third amendment to the city manager's contract. The city manager has been with the city of Placerville for over a decade, and the request is that this amendment reflect a two-week management leave in addition to his existing benefits. There is no cash value associated with this two-week leave, and it's on a use-it-or-lose-it basis. This would apply for this year and next year, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions from council? No? We will open this up for public comment. Seeing none, we will bring it back to the council for any further discussion or a motion.
I'll move the agenda item.
A second.
Okay, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye, thank you. Okay, and we will move to 7.9, retroactively approve and affirm a salary schedule effective January 6, 2024, and abolish one full-time police officer position from the fiscal year 2324 general fund budget. Mr. Warren?
Good evening, Mayor No, members of the council. So at your meeting held on August 10, 2021, the city council approved an agreement with Bryce Consulting to perform a citywide compensation study. The comparable agencies included in the study were the city of Auburn, Vault, Grass Valley, Ione, Nevada City, Marysville, Oroville, South Lake Tahoe, Eldorado County, and EID. The study was completed in early 2022 and was incorporated with labor negotiations with Local 39. At its meeting held on August 9, 2022, the city ratified the MOU with Local 39. One of the provisions of the mem- One of the provisions of the memorandum of understanding is a salary increase based on the annual change in the San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose Consumer Price Index, all urban consumers from February 22 to February 23, with a minimum increase of 2% and a maximum increase of 4%, effective the first full pay period in January 24, which falls on January 6 of this month. The actual CPI for that period was 5.3%, so the COLA was determined to be a maximum rate of 4%. A second provision provides an additional 1% salary adjustment or COLA based on the weighted average of the results from the salary study performed by Bryce Consulting. The salary study adjustments vary for each position depending on the current position's salary as compared to the market median salary. The salary study adjustments vary from 0.24% to 4.29%. In your packet is attachment B, which lists the positions and the overall percentage change in salary. The salary study, excuse me, at its meeting held on June 14, 2022, the city council adopted resolutions 9085, 9086, and 9087 that outline the same salaries and benefit provisions for the confidential executive management supervisory employee units respectfully. Accordingly, staff recommends the city council approve a new salary schedule with a 4% COLA increase and the salary study adjustments for all affected non-sworn positions within Local 39, as well as the confidential unit executive management supervisory units, which are unrepresented. Staff also recommends that the salary study adjustments be made for sworn administrative positions, including the chief of police, police commanders as well. At its meeting held on October 10, 2023, the city council approved a side letter to the PPOA MOU, the Placerville Police Officers Association memorandum of understanding in closed session. The city manager announced in open session that evening the approval of the side letter to the current PPOA MOU, including the 10% salary increase effective January 6, 2024, and a 19.97% decrease in medical benefits effective January 1 of this year. Staff also recommends the 10% salary increase and the 19.97% decrease in medical benefits be made to sworn administrative positions, including the chief of police and the police commanders. If approved, the salaries for the positions listed on attachment B will be adjusted accordingly. The salaries for all other positions will remain the same. The projected cost of the salary increase mentioned above included in the salary study is $106,725 for fiscal year 2324. The city council adopted the fiscal year 2324 operating budget, which assumed the $140,778 for the additional cost of the 4% COLA and 1% salary study adjustment for non-sworn positions, including those represented by Local 39 and unrepresented positions. The projected cost of the 10% salary increase for sworn positions, including PPOA represented positions, chief of police, and police commanders, are unrepresented positions total $110,853. To offset this cost, staff recommends abolishing one vacant full-time equivalent police officer position, which provides a projected savings of $144,00906, which overshadows the $110,000 mentioned earlier for the remainder of this fiscal year, fiscal year 2324. So I know the city attorney had some suggested changes to tonight's action, and Ms. Abraham, if you can discuss those.
Those have been reflected. I just wanted them to be read orally into the record, so thank you for that.
Thank you. With that, staff recommends the city council retroactively approve and affirm the salary schedule without, with the noted changes to the position of, as noted, and abolish the one full-time equivalent police officer position. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Are there any questions from the city council?
Can I just make one comment? There is one correction to the resolution, which is adding the abolishment of the one police officer position, which is, just so you know, that is a position that was added to the budget this year, and we're eliminating that one that was added. It has not been hired. We haven't had the position filled at this point, so.
Great, thank you. Okay, we will open this for public comment.
To answer my question, I assume that the reduction of one police officer had to do with cost savings. We don't usually think of a need for less police officers, it's usually more. So my question was about what is the pay scale for our police officers in Placerville as compared to, for example, a sheriff's office and elsewhere? And how does it impact longevity? I know over the years, I've always been impressed with the local officers. Some I met that were really exceptional, that I thought would have been teaching at academies or college courses, and then after a few years are not around because they've gone to the sheriff's office or someplace else. So it's just to tell us, if you could flesh it out, as to how the pay scale here compares elsewhere. Thank you. And is it really necessary to cut that one out? Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, we will close public comment. Chief Ren, do you want to address that question or?
I'll jump in real quick because I have some information. So.
Great, thank you.
The last time we did a salary study, police officers and sergeants were at market median when you consider certain things. However, some of the agencies that, like Eldorado County, were higher for many years, and I have to go back and check, but our sergeants were paid less than a regular deputy at the Eldorado County Sheriff's Department. So it depends on how you look at it, but as far as market median, based on the study, they are, when the study was done, at market median.
I've just got a couple of things to add. So in comparison to the cities that we use to make these comparisons, which are equally-sized cities with equally-sized departments, Mr. Warren's absolutely correct. The problem is, we're losing people regionally to agencies that pay so much more that is literally a 15-minute drive from here. So in order to stop the hemorrhaging, that's why we came up with this plan, so I can create some organizational stability, stop having our taxpayers pay for the advanced training of these officers so other cities can benefit from it. And so far, it's worked for us with this, you know, on the horizon. We don't have anybody looking to run out the door, and we finally reached full capacity at the department.
Okay, thank you.
But we were regionally lower. We lump us in with places like, you know, Jackson or whatever, we made more money than them, but nobody, I'm not losing people to Jackson. I'm losing them to Folsom, Roseville, Sack County, so.
Thank you very much. Any more questions or comments from city council?
No, I would just, I'll make a comment. I was, I got a chance to work on this last year with the chief and with the city manager, and that's exactly right. It was really Folsom, Sacramento, some of those other areas. So it wasn't, you couldn't do apples to apples when you're doing Ione and Jackson and those areas. Yeah, we're competitive there, but that isn't where we were having the hemorrhaging. And so we were, in that extra position, it was an extra position. So we're fully staffed, but that would have been an additional police officer that we all would have loved to have had, unfortunately, but we are fully staffed, so we're not losing any coverage in terms of what we do on a normal basis with the police department. This would have been an enhancement with that officer position.
Have a motion?
I will make a motion, I will make a motion to pass the resolution of the city council for the retroactive pay schedule with the addition of the deletion of that full-time police officer position.
A second.
Okay, we have roll call.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor Noe?
Aye.
Okay, number 10, we have no ordinances. Number 11, we have no public hearings. That brings us to discussion and action items. 12.1, consider adopting a resolution. One, approving an agreement with Arts and Culture Eldorado for the further stabilization work on historic city hall buildings located at 487 and 489 Main Street. Two, authorizing the city manager to prepare and enter into an agreement with Architectural Nexus to prepare renovation stabilization plans for 487 and 489 Main Street for a total cost of $90,580, and authorize the city manager to execute the same. And three, approving a $45,657 budget liquidation from the ARPA funds for the historic city hall roof replacement project. And four, approving a $45,657 budget appropriation from the ARPA funds for the historic city hall renovation stabilization plan project. And five, approving a $50,000 budget appropriation from the general fund unassigned fund balance for the historic city hall renovation stabilization plan project. Ms. McConnell? Okay, I'm just noting the names on the sheet. Okay, Mr. Morris.
So just to go through a little bit of, excuse me, go through a little bit of background on this. In September of 2019, following the receipt of a reuse proposal, the city council authorized staff to begin negotiations with Arts and Culture Eldorado for the use of 487, 489 Main Street, known as Ketchup and Mustard or Historic City Hall, whatever you want to call it there. Those negotiations began, however, there were many things that impacted that time. As you know, in 2020, we went into the whole COVID era that affected that. We also had some uncertainty in their proposal. There was anticipation of other buildings being part of their entire program, including 515 and 525 Main Street. Needless to say, that whole process was delayed. Later, in 2020, the city began a process to replace the roof on 487 and 489 Main Street. However, due to concerns of the stability of the buildings, after looking at the reports that were done by structural engineers, we delayed that process and looked at what could be done to further stabilize the west wall of the building. That project to stabilize the west wall of the building was done by the city and was completed. We then began to look again at replacing the roof, however, there were still concerns about the instability of the entire building that was brought up. In the spring of 2022, staff met with actually three engineers that had reviewed the building. One was Burn Engineering, who prepared the initial feasibility study. DH Glabon Associates, who did the plans for the stabilization of the west wall. And Bueller Engineering, a structural engineer who had been brought on to look at the building in terms of the full restoration of the building, had been brought on by Arts and Culture Eldorado through Arts Nexus, their engineer. Concerns were still raised, and it was recommended the city building official review the reports and consider the stability of the building. I need to go back and mention during this time, the city was allowing Arts and Culture Eldorado to use those buildings for offices and for gallery. After review by the city's building official on July 27 of 2022, it was determined that the buildings were not safe to occupy. And on August 4, our building official, Mr. Horstfall, prepared a memorandum revoking the occupancy permit for those buildings. And we informed Arts and Culture Eldorado when they were required to move out. We subsequently worked with Arts and Culture after we had been able to obtain 525 Main Street, the old district attorney annex. We were able to do some minor improvements to that building and allowed Arts and Culture to move into that building. On October 11, 2022, council authorized staff to enter into an agreement with Arch Architectural Nexus to perform a stabilization investigation to determine the true stability of the two buildings and potential process to stabilize the buildings. That, that study was completed, that investigation was completed, and is attached to your report that you have here tonight. On February 28, 2023, council authorized the city manager to enter into an agreement with Arch Culture Eldorado for 525 Main Street for the uses of office and gallery. So that's what I referred to earlier, and they've been in there since that time. Staff worked with the structural engineer on the evaluation. The results were completed on June 30, 2023, and again, are attached to this report. The report recommended immediate work to stabilize the buildings to prevent further deterioration and damage. Staff and a council subcommittee then met with Arts and Culture Eldorado to discuss how the work could be done. An agreement was reached in principle and the city, that the city would pay for the cost of design work for the stabilization, and Arts and Culture would pay for the cost of construction. Cost of the design work is estimated, or not estimated, but a proposal, which is also attached here, is for $89,580 plus $1,000 in reimbursable expenses. And again, that's attached to this report. The estimated cost, based on discussions with our structural engineers to stabilize the buildings, is $350,000. So staff is recommending at this time that we adopt this agreement, which we would then pay for this, for the design work, for the stabilization, and will in turn allow Arts and Culture to begin the fundraising effort to raise the 350,000, actually, it's 350, plus we're recommending a 10% contingency for a total of $385,000 to pay for the structural stabilization of those buildings. The timeframe for that, it's estimated that additional material testing will take place. First, it will take two weeks. The construction documentation to prepare the plans will take eight weeks. And then next, the proposal says eight weeks for permitting. We're hoping that that may not take that long, could be shortened. In the agreement, it states that it's our hope that the funding can be raised in one year, and we would be ready to do the work approximately a year from now, if that can happen. So our recommendation to you tonight is that you approve the contract with Arts and Culture Eldorado and authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Arch Nexus for the, for the design plans that they would do in conjunction with Bueller structural engineers. And I think that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have those.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Michael?
Cleve, do we have, I know this will probably come up, in terms of the one year, if for some reason the numbers aren't hit, what have you, are there off ramps, or are there continuation of the highway, let's say, as well, to say, well, let's say we get to, you know, 175,000 or some number that has meaningful impact, but isn't quite there yet. Do we have the ability to make changes to this contract?
Yeah, there is a provision to extend the agreement upon mutual agreement of both parties. So if we're, if we're close, yes, we would, we can extend that. It'll just depend on where we're at, I think, and we can bring back that discussion.
Make that determination. Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? No, we will open this for public comment.
Sue Rodman, Placerville resident. We've been going over the Ketchup and Mustard buildings for several years, and when we discovered how bad a shape they're in, then we need to do something about it. And it seems to me like the citizens of Placerville have always said they wanted to keep those buildings and fix them so that they can be used. So this looks like a way to accomplish that, so I think this is a good idea. It's about time. As a matter of fact, when we had water running down the inside of the walls in those buildings, we knew the roof had gone, and we really need to fix everything so that this is a habitable building that's safe for people to work in and safe for the public to go in to see the exhibits that they put on.
Thank you, Sue.
Good evening again, Kathy Lishman. I'm very much in support of this, and I'm happy to see that it's at this point where the building can actually get some help. So it's a very special building. I do not call it the Ketchup and Mustard Building. That was invented for the schoolchildren that come through town. That was invented for the schoolchildren that come through town. It's really old City Hall. Thanks. And the Confidence Building.
Thank you, Kathy. Regina, our city clerk. Go ahead, Sue.
So I just saw this on the agenda last night, so I scrambled to try to put this together. This is basically, as I'm representing as president of Eldorado Gold 1848, we're asking that you deny this resolution, and we're in opposition of funding, continuing to fund for evaluations and consulting, and it's time we just fix the buildings. I'm asking the council to deny this request. Neither the city nor the petitioner for this RFP has been good stewards of these buildings. The buildings have sadly been allowed to languish and fall into disrepair since the city moved out of them. Eldorado Art and Culture has been given the opportunity since 2019 to stabilize these buildings and has been derelict in its duties to do so. The city council should terminate the agreement made in 2019 in allowing the art council to continue as tenant for these buildings. The action tonight should have gone out to historic nonprofits to have the opportunity to bid on the stabilization project, and we ask that you do not approve the resolution and instead open the RFP for qualified applicants, that this did not go out to other people that could bid on this. I think that's not legal. So I'm also representing the Friends of Historic Haytown in this. I'm giving you the benefit of the doubt, since many of you, some of you are new, may not know the history, but back in 2018, the Wampe Mies tribe petitioned for the RFP with the support of numerous nonprofits, probably about 20 of them, local. They were denied based on technicality. So in 2019, Eldorado Art Culture was awarded the RFP. These are public buildings. What is the track record of the Eldorado Art and Culture? They have had five years to do something, and there wasn't even a tarp put on the leaking roof. Then the city allowed for the installation of shoring on the building. The report stated, "The expectation of that, once the shoring is in place, renovations to the building can commence," and this was in 2020. We knew that this was not true, which was confirmed by Bueller Engineering. In 2020, I came up with a solution to fix the buildings at the cost of the shoring that was done. I had met with the engineer during the evaluations, and with a brick mason, we worked with the city on a proposal, and we bid and had a schedule. I have it right here. There was a schedule and a bid, and it was all taken care of and presented to the city, but not publicly. We did the research. Reading through the current Bueller Engineering report, he came up with the same solutions we had brought to the city and council in 2020. This is zooming by, so I'm going to ask again that you deny this. I talked to Bill Robey about the grant fund possibilities, and he informed me and said, "I could share this with you," that the Eldorado Community Foundation would not be contributing any funds to the Eldorado Art Culture. They have to raise $380,000, and that project should not cost that much. We could have done that for half that much. Bottom line, the Art and Culture name has not been good stewards, and they have a bad record. And it makes no sense you're offering these buildings to them again. You did not satisfy, they did not satisfy the first contract, and this should now go back out to bid, which is required by law. And...
Thank you, Sue.
We do, 1848 has the expertise, the knowledge, and the heart. We have experience, and we've proven with the buildings that we're restoring and are restoring, and we understand historic preservation. I just ask that you, this has been five years.
Sue, we need to wrap it up. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, we will bring this back to the council. First, I'd like our attorney to comment on saying this was not legal because of the RFP.
I think there's a misunderstanding of what's being considered tonight. This did not go out for a request for proposals because the action is not to have Arts and Culture do the repairs. This is essentially a fundraising agreement where Arts and Culture is going to be raising funds for then the city to go out for bids to improve the buildings. So that is the nature of what's being discussed tonight.
Great. Thank you. Okay.
I'll just, for the record, I think, is that the only one? No. Jackie, were you on City Council? I think you were on. Well, regardless, I'll just, for the record, in terms of what happened when Arts and Culture Eldorado won the bid, I actually had this delayed a month because there was a technicality in the original submission. And so the other, the Wapunas tribe actually had a whole extra month to get their new RFP in, which they did not. They were late. And if anyone knows RFPs, I know a couple of us do these for a living, actually a few of us, if you're 10 seconds late, you don't get it in. And they had an additional 30 days to do it. So this was done in a fair and open manner, and Arts and Culture Eldorado, Arts and Culture Eldorado won that bid.
Further questions, comments, discussion?
No, I, oh. No, hold on. Forgot where I was at.
Well, no, no, no. I mean, yeah, whatever. I agree. I'm a consultant. I've been a consultant for decades now. You're either on time, or you're not. That's how consulting works. No, don't, no, no. That's, well, and the technicality, I'm assuming that was the technicality. If not, if not, it's okay. History is what it is. The tarp on the roof, you know, it's funny, when we were going through the agenda, the two of us, we don't break the Brown Act, it's just two of us, we discussed the agenda with the city manager the day or so before the meeting, so that we know what's in there, and we can ask questions about it. We don't discuss it with anybody else. But I actually brought up, because they were talking about the roof leaking, and we talked about tarps. And there was some question as to whether or not actually tarps would actually fix the leaking problems, because the water is coming in through the walls in many places. And so you're not going to, unless you were to tent the entire building, or both of them, the tarping is somewhat questionable. That's why we have buckets in the attic, and we go and fix them every once in a while. We have talked about this for a long time. It's hard to fix old buildings. I am satisfied that this process is fine. Anyway, and I'd like to move the agenda item.
I will second the agenda item and just want to say, I want to thank Arts and Culture Eldorado for really stepping up. I mean, raising money for anything is not easy. Raising money for a building that you can't use is even more difficult. And so I want to thank them for those efforts going forward, because it's going to be a tough task, and I hope everybody is open to helping with that project, because it's going to be, it'll be to the benefit of the entire community. So I just want to thank them for stepping up and trying to get those funds needed, because there's no magic pill out there where we're going to find these funds. There's, you know, at times I thought, well, maybe there's a state budget ask, you know, we were flush with $100 billion surplus in the state of California. We now have a $68 billion surplus that will likely be $75 billion by the time, deficit by the time May revise comes around. So there isn't that magic bullet out there where we're going to find $2, $3 million just sort of floating around. And we will look for grants, and we will do things, and we're going to work with Arts and Culture, and we'll, you know, and see where we can try to partner on those things. But this is a difficult thing. So I just want to say thank you for that, and thank you for staff for really being diligent and working through this to come to an agreement that I think protects the city as well as makes it as amenable as possible to try to get something positive done going forward.
Thank you, Michael. To answer your question, no, I wasn't on council at the time. So I appreciate you bringing everyone up to speed on that.
Thank you.
Is there further discussion or questions from the council? No? With that, we have a first and a second. We'll do roll call.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. We will move on to 12.2. Consider approving a budget appropriations, budget liquidations, rejection, a bid protest received from B&amp;M Builders approving the award of a construction contract to the lowest responsive bidder, Doug Veerkamp, General Engineering, in the amount of $4,926.39. And approved change order number one in the amount of $914,414.86 for the Broadway Maintenance Project from Mosquito Road to Schnell School Road, and find that the project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Sections 15301 and 15303. Ms. McConnell?
Thank you, Mayor No and City Council. The item before you this evening will allow the Broadway Maintenance Project to proceed into construction by approving budget appropriations, rejecting a bid protest, and awarding a construction contract to the lowest responsive bidder. As you may recall, the need for the Broadway Maintenance Project was identified through development of the federally funded Broadway Sidewalks Project. The Broadway Maintenance Project will provide much-needed locally-funded improvements, including pavement rehabilitation, water system repairs and replacement, storm drainage improvements, and the project will construct a new segment of 18-inch sewer main to address future capacity issues that were identified in the city's sewer master plan. Staff determined the project to be exempt from the California Quality Act pursuant to Sections 15301(c) and 15303 of the SEQA Guidelines, and a notice of exemption was filed with the Eldorado County Office of the Recorder. The project design phase was completed, and staff advertised the project for bidding in September. A public bid opening was held on October 24th, and three bids were received, and I will read them in order of their value. The first is from Doug Veerkamp, General Engineering, in the amount of $4,926,039.80. The second, from B&amp;M Builders, in the amount of $5,615,434. And the third, from Central Valley Engineering and Asphalt, in the amount of $5,788,269. Following the bid opening, B&amp;M Builders submitted a bid protest to the city on October 27th. The bid protest stated that during bid opening, only the bid from B&amp;M was read aloud and reviewed, and not the other two bids. The bid protest was independently reviewed by the city attorney, and a formal response was provided to B&amp;M on November 3rd. The city attorney determined that the bid protest lacked merit, and the city attorney also substantiated that all three bids were read aloud and reviewed by staff, which was consistently stated in the testimonies of those in attendance at bid opening. Staff is recommending that the city council deny the bid protest. Staff is recommending approval of a construction contract with Doug Veerkamp, General Engineering, the lowest responsive bidder, in the amount of $4,926,039.80. Concurrently, staff is also recommending the approval of a construction contract change order which proposes to reduce the quantities of some of the bid items associated with the storm drain repair work at the Wiltie Road and Schnell School intersections. Bids came in significantly higher than expected and insufficient. Funding is available to fund all of the storm drain improvements. For one item in particular, which was the pipelining of the storm drain to extend its service life, the bids came in more than double the engineer's estimate. The items that are being reduced from this contract would be delayed and then later rebid as a separate project once funding is available. Hopefully, this will occur later in the summer. We still hope to build the project in 2024. Staff is working on another project to repair the sinkhole at Upper Broadway and Point View Drive, and we are considering bidding these projects together. The city would benefit from the economy of scales of bidding both of these projects due to the similar scope of work and bid items. Also included in the item tonight are the recommended budget appropriations to fund the project. Measure H will fund the sewer system improvements. Measure L will fund the water, storm drain, and roadway improvements. And the ARPA Fund, which is the American Rescue Plan Act, will fund the city's broadband infrastructure improvements. ARPA funds may be used for any municipal purpose, including but not limited to investments in water, sewer, broadband, and infrastructure. The city council previously allocated ARPA funds to three other projects: the Fuel Reduction Project, the Lions Park Shelter, and the Homeless Navigation Center. However, since that time, one of those projects was completed and carries a remaining balance, and the other two projects are no longer necessary, so those funds may be reallocated for other uses. Staff recommends that those funds are liquidated and allocated to the Broadway Maintenance Project to fund the broadband infrastructure. That concludes my verbal report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council? It is a lot, but I appreciate it, how it's, you know, laid out, bullet points, makes it easier to digest. Okay. We will open 12.2 to the public, public comment.
Sue Rodman, Placerville resident and member of the Measure H, Measure L Committee. And I think that this is a good project. We all know what kind of shape Broadway is in, and this needs to be done. And because the city has determined that it's not just the pavement that needs help, it's the sewer and the water and all the infrastructure there, and I think that our attorney is absolutely correct. If you don't play by the rules, you don't get to play. So if they want to protest it, if you want, but if you haven't played by the rules, you're out. That's the name of the game. So, great. This looks like a good, this is a good way to go.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will bring it back to the council for further discussion or a motion.
I will make a motion to approve staff recommendations on this item.
I'll second, and I'll just add that I think, you know, broadband infrastructure is really important, and as well as all of our other infrastructure to improve economic development of that Broadway corridor.
Great. Thank you. David, did you have something to add? No? Okay. We'll do roll call.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye. Okay. That brings us to 12.3. Review and consider approval of a proposal from RMA Irrigation for Design Services of the irrigation system at Lions Park, and authorize the Director of Community Services to negotiate and execute an agreement with RMA Irrigation in the amount of $23,760 for the Lions Park Softball Field Irrigation System Replacement Project. Mr. Zeller?
Thank you, Mayor No and council. That's a mouthful. The council approved a capital improvement project last fiscal year, and that was to provide design and installation funding for a new irrigation system for Lions Park. The old system is, we're guessing is from the 70s, and it has been failing for some time. The total funding for this project, for the design and the installation of irrigation, was approved as a CIP for $137,500. So this staff report seeks approval for the design phase, which has been proposed by RMA Irrigation, as the mayor mentioned. I'm asking for the base proposal fee plus 10%, which is a total of $23,760. The services that are going to be provided under this proposal would include base map preparation, specifications, construction documents, construction administration, and ASBelt documents post-construction. This design will accommodate the option of splitting it into two phases to allow the flexibility to either install the entire system or focus on the lower field only. A follow-up staff report in February will address staff's recommendation for either of these options, installing the entire system or phasing the irrigation to install the lower field system, along with addressing the grading and drainage issues on that lower field, and removing the turf and replacing it with large roll sod. So this second option would provide the Leagues with one completely renovated field, and a second project would be proposed this upcoming fiscal year to do the same type of irrigation, grading, drainage, and turf renovations to the upper field. So just to cover costs again, the base cost of these services as proposed is $21,600, and staff is requesting approval plus the 10% contingency of $21,000 or $2,160 to bring it to $23,760. And this cost is within the project scope and funding of $137,500. And the proposal is attached, and I can take any questions from the council.
Thank you, Terry. Questions from the council? No? Okay. We will open this to public comment. Don't everybody run up at once?
Hi, my name is Mickey Killian. We're part of the committee.
Hi, my name is Mickey Killian. We're part of the committee, softball committee, as Teresa had mentioned. We're definitely in support of the renovations or the irrigation, if you will. Just the concerns that we have, it's in the two phases, I guess, and not knowing exactly if it's going to be a cost overrun for specifics to where it would be a two-phase project. And that's just, I think, part of our concerns. If it's going to be just drug out further in possibly years, because we've had issues even this past year where contracts weren't signed, irrigation wasn't installed as it was supposed to have been installed by November, is what we were told. We have, we have fields out there that are just horrible. So, we just have concerns, but it's, I appreciate hearing what Mr. Zeller is saying, very much so. So, I know, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Sue Rodman, while I don't play softball anymore, I understand that you've got to have a field that's in decent shape in order to prevent any injuries to your players and to be able to have decent softball games. So, good for us. Keep going. Get this done.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, Teresa Brown again. I just want to add the concern for continuance of play through this process, if we're able to. So if we're doing, sorry. If we're doing one field at a time, how playable is the second field? What's the length of time that that field would be down? If we could be apprised of that information, we can then share with other people in the community, other softball players, and keep them apprised of the process and what we're looking at overall for our timeframe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for further discussion, questions?
I have a question. So, we're going to do the plan. We have to do the, you know, get all the specs and everything together for this irrigation thing. Assuming that we have enough budget and we can actually go, what would be the timing on doing this particular effort, and then following up with actually doing the work?
The, the, the goal and the understanding with getting this design contract underway is either being able to get the entire irrigation system done before our spring play, or get the lower field done, plus the improvements. It wouldn't take that long to actually do this project one way or the other. It's just a matter of getting all our ducks in a row, getting contracts signed, and moving forward.
Terry, do you anticipate any, because I know it's, we're in that time where every contractor is extremely busy. Do you think we'll, we'll meet those timelines, or do you feel confident, or is that like a, is that a stretch goal?
I feel confident at this point that we can move forward. We will, depending on if there are snags or issues with our timeline, we will make sure that we're moving to maximize play for the softball leagues one way or the other.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'm wondering, it says you're going to bring this back in February. When you bring it back, and we're looking at that split decision, are we going to have the total cost for redoing all of one field? Because I think that's what kind of was talked about, is doing one field at a time rather than just all the irrigation. Are we going to have better cost estimates on that?
Yeah, that's the plan, is to come with realistic cost estimates, so the council can have a clear view of, of what the options are.
Great, great.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye. Thank you. That brings us to council reports from other agencies and meetings. El Dorado Transit Authority did not meet. El Dorado County Transportation Commission?
Thursday.
Thursday. LAFCO?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yes.
Okay, SECOG?
We did meet, and I think the big news is, so there's a new JPA Joint Powers Agreement between Caltrans, Yolo County, and SECOG, and this will be for the first, essentially, paid lane through the Yolo Causeway, you know, going over into the Bay Area. So this will be the first one in our region to go into being probably in the next couple of years. About, there's $86 million that Yolo County was able to pull down from federal funds, and the JPA had to be put together, I think, by February 18th. And so, it was sort of a mad rush to get all that done, and so we, we have members that we had to appoint, and the different counties. Really, this was more of a dialogue between Sacramento County, Yolo County, and Placerville County, the three most likeliest places where those tolling lanes will end up. I mean, if we ever get one in El Dorado County, it'll probably be like in, I don't know, 50 years. So, I don't think any of us are really going to be too much worried about that. But, but it's going to probably be a long ways off. Not that we, but our constituents may potentially be using those. Our residents will be using those, those toll lanes as we go forward. So, that is in place for now. So it'll have Yolo County representatives, representative from Caltrans, which is a completely new thing. They will actually be a voting member of the JPA, as opposed to just an ex officio member. So that was a kind of a, a new thing, and be a first in the state of California. And, and then, and then SECOG will have representatives as well. So, that is the news out of SECOG.
Great, thank you. Pioneer Community Energy?
Yeah, we met last week. Couple of things that we did is we voted our new chair and vice chair in, and our chair remains Alice Dodwin Cavillo of Auburn, and our vice chair is now Tom Ivy of City of Grass Valley. We also had the report that Mr. Kane gave to us earlier today, was given to the Board of Directors, and we reviewed the upcoming programs that Pioneer Energy is working on for the new year. And as those roll out, I will be bringing those back to the council and the community.
Great, thank you. Placerville Fire Safe Council has not met since the last meeting, and Opportunity Knox?
We have not met. We meet on February 2nd.
Okay, great. All right, requests for future agenda items. Oh, public comment, I apologize. Public comment on our, on our comments, on the council reports. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. And number 14, requests for future agenda items. I have one. I don't know if everybody knows, but the Health and Human Services for the county has made a presentation to the Board of Supervisors. They've made it to South Lake Tahoe, and both those agencies are having discussions about tobacco and urgency ordinances, and I'm concerned how everything they may be doing might affect us. And so, I would like to request at the next meeting that we receive that presentation from Health and Human Services on the tobacco, and look at what the other agencies are doing, and decide if there's a direction we may want to proceed in or not.
That sounds good to me, considering the amount of smoke shops that there are. So, yes, I, I will, yes, I support that.
Yeah, okay, we have a unanimous. Okay, we will move to city manager and staff reports. Receive and file a status update for the Clay Street Bridge Replacement Project. Ms. McConnell, you were popular tonight.
Thank you, Mayor No and City Council. This item is brought before you tonight to provide a brief update on the status and schedule of the Clay Street Bridge Replacement Project. As you know, this project has a longstanding history. It was first identified in planning documents back in the 1970s. In 2006, the city was awarded funds to deliver the project from the Federal Highway Bridge Program, HBP, and efforts have been underway since that time to define the project's scope of work and move towards the approval of an environmental document. Under its currently approved funding, the project's scope of work proposes a bridge replacement and the realignment of Clay Street to meet Main Street at what would be a four-way stop-controlled intersection with Cedar Ravine Road. Because this project is federally funded, it must comply with the federal environmental process through the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA, as well as comply with the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA. Though similar, they are two separate processes. In 2013, the city began the current CEQA document in the form of an environmental impact report. The draft EIR was circulated for a 45-day public review period on March 2nd, 2018, which closed on April 18th, 2018. Following that, and while completing the NEPA process, the project team decided to take a more insistent approach on protecting cultural resources in Placerville. This change in approach included making the assumption that for the purposes of the project, Main Street is historically eligible as a historic district on both the state and national registers. It is important to acknowledge and understand that this assumed district does not currently exist, and in order to meet eligibility and registration to be established, an extensive process must be completed. But that process is beyond the scope and purpose of this bridge replacement project. Since is a different, since this is a different approach than what was presented in the draft EIR in 2018, the draft EIR has been revised and will be recirculated. Also, since 2018, there have been a number of changes in CEQA guidance that must also be updated in the new EIR. The draft revised EIR will be completed and circulated for a 45-day public review beginning on this Friday, January 26th. The document will be available for download on the city's website, and a copy will also be available at both the Development Services and Engineering Departments. Staff and the project team will be holding a public meeting during the 45-day public review period. All comments must be received by Friday, March 12th, 2024, at 5:00 p.m. After public circulation, the project team will respond in writing to any significant environmental issues raised in the comments received. The response to comments will then be distributed to any agency or person who provided written comments, which will occur a minimum of 10 days before the city council hearing on the final EIR. Lastly, a public hearing will be held by the city council to consider the final EIR, take public testimony, and then approve, conditionally approve, or deny the project. That concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have regarding the content of this status update. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from council? No?
No, I'll just, I, I think it was, my first meeting after I'd been appointed, I met with Cleve, and I think Cleve told me, you know, we're, this is coming down, this is going to be in a couple of months. You, you know, you got to kind of bone up and get up to speed on all that. And that was obviously five-plus years ago, and there's a lot of work on this prior to that as well. So, I'm looking forward to seeing the new EIR come out and see what, what it contains, and the differences from that original 2018 version, and want to thank staff for all the diligence in, in moving this forward, and really going that extra step to ensure that those historical assets, you know, were just sort of supposed within that, and, and how that would affect the EIR going forward. So, I'm looking forward to seeing it.
Great. David? Okay, we will open this for public comment.
Sue Taylor again, and, and just a note, if, if you want to make a statement about what you assume I'm discussing, I would really appreciate next time you invite me back up for clarification, because it's kind of a pattern over the years that I've done this, that I'll say something, and then the council usually likes to make some snide remark when I sit down. And I, I'd really rather have a dialogue than just have that happen to deflect what I had said. So, anyway, on that note, this, in the agenda, it states this is a, it's not in the action items, and it's under the city manager and staff report, and the title says, "Receive and File a Status Update for the Clay Street Bridge." So, anybody looking at this would just think it's, okay, another report, it's been 18 years, whatever, not a big deal. But if you go into the actual report, it says, "And to announce the release of the recirculation draft environmental impact report for a 45-day public review beginning on Friday, January 26, 2024." That was not on the description of the agenda, which is kind of a CEQA violation. So I would just caution, I know you're going to just blow it off, but that's kind of good if somebody's going to challenge you. So I just thought I'd give you that heads up. And, and then I also, the state agencies have conferred with an adverse effect this project will have to Main Street, and SHPO has yet to see the memorandum of agreement. So I'm surprised that this is going out in two days. First, that it wasn't itemized on the agenda, and second, the, if you read through, there's still things that the consultant has to do. So I would think those things should be tasks, should be completed, so that the public has full access to what other information is needed to know for this project. Adverse effect means you have to justify the destruction of our historic Main Street, and what is the council's plans to protect this city in regards to historic preservation? I would really like to see that list, because I feel like for the last 20 years, I come up here and say, can we protect this? Can we protect that? Can we protect anything? And then when our family takes on a project, I have a file this thick of little misdemeanors and, and all kinds of things that were thrown at us while we tried to restore one of the most historic buildings in the city. So, on that, beyond that, would any, if, if any of you would be willing to discuss the project with Friends of Historic Hayntown, that's actually who I'm representing on this comment, prior to releasing this RDEIR, we, we were the body that challenged the city back decades ago, and, or is the city council kind of one body? Oh, time's up. So, I would just hope you'd schedule this. I'm concerned about the schedule, and since it's not been announced during the meeting or council, and reports have not done, I'm just asking, is this really finalized? Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Other questions, comments?
Good evening. Ryan Carter, speaking tonight as a citizen in no other official capacity. This project has been a boondoggle of historic proportions since, you know, since I've been in the city. Nearly $2 million of state and local tax dollars have been spent on this project, and we're barely off the starting line. I'd just love to know at what point the state's going to say enough is enough. When are you going to stop wasting our money? And local citizens should be asking the same questions. We need to go back to the drawing board on this. Just dump this, this terrible project, stop wasting money on it, and let's find a solution that's cheaper and works better with our historic districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Sue Rodman, Placerville Fire Safe Council. If you live in the neighborhoods that are accessed by this bridge, and we have a fire, you will be in trouble, deep trouble. This bridge is not adequate to allow traffic going in to save homes. It can't handle fire trucks, and at the same time, handle people trying to evacuate out of these neighborhoods. This is a project that really needs to be done. This is too, this bridge is too narrow, and it is not up to standards. So it does need to be replaced, and somewhere along the way, we need to stop fighting about it and find out what really works. I'm looking forward to seeing the new EIR.
Thank you, Sue.
My name's Ron Harris. I'm a photographer. I've been a resident of El Dorado County for 45 years. I'm a member of the Gold Rush Fire Brigade. I'm a member of the wagon train, and a photographer for both of those groups. You ask for public opinion, but you don't give a damn about it. You already made up your minds, no matter if Sue Taylor talks, if I talks, or anybody else talks. I urge you to quit wasting people's money and quit wasting people's time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I just want to reiterate what's been said. I think that it is pretty intellectually dishonest to put this as a simple report, even though it's pretty clear you guys have made up your mind. You continue to bring up over and over again through the years the same project that the city doesn't want done, and right as you feel they're not paying attention, you think it's going to get through. But I assure you, this time, the outcome will be the same, and I implore you to be against it in 45 days. But, you know, it may take I implore you to be against it in 45 days, but, you know, it may take a bit more of public pressure to get you to do so, but you will do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, we'll bring it back. This item's been going on for a very long time, and I've been to a lot of those meetings, we've had a lot of public meetings, we've had a lot of support for this, we have opposition, we have support, we have a lot to consider, and that's what we're going to do. I'm really looking forward to this new EIR, which is not available yet, so it's hard to agendize and have a discussion about something that we don't know what it is yet, but I do look forward to that conversation.
Thank you for asking. If it was illegal, I would have stopped you before you were able to hear it. There was two allegations. One was a Brown Act violation, there is no Brown Act violation. The Brown Act requires a brief description of all matters to be discussed on the agenda, this contains that, and it explains that there's a brief status update of this project. There was also an allegation that there was a CEQA violation, because it wasn't mentioned that the draft EIR was going to be published for a public comment review 45 days on Friday in the agenda. CEQA does not have any independent requirements for posting notice beyond the 45-day public comment period in compliance with all other government code sections with respect to public hearings. Therefore, there's no CEQA violation.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I guess what that means is this body does not have to take an action to start the 45-day period.
That, that is correct, and you are not being asked to take action.
And that's, and that's what we weren't being asked to do.
Correct.
Because it's really easy to come up and say that we violate rules and regulations and say stuff. You can get up there and say stuff. And the funny thing is, when we disagree, or when we even have our, the person we pay money to actually interpret the law for us, we're accused of, I don't know what, but not listening. Well, we did, we listened to her. She probably has a bunch of letters after her name, she went to law school, she understands this stuff, and she said we didn't violate a law. That's what you need to know. The person with expertise said we did not violate a law. Now, you can choose to believe anything you want, because this is America, and I would defend your right to believe anything. No law was broken tonight on this subject.
And with that, I would encourage everyone to look this Friday when the EIR comes out, give it a thorough read through, and we will have a good discussion moving forward.
I agree.
Thank you. Number 16, upcoming items, there are many, and I'll leave you to read those for yourself, which brings us to number 17, adjournment 6:33.
Sorry, I'm not very quick. Kathy Lishman. I was looking at the ideas, the upcoming items, and one thing that I see missing, well, I see the annual traffic impact mitigation fee report. I thought that we needed to do an updated park and recreation fee report. Because of all the new development that's going into the city, someone has to pay for all the improvements to our parks, so I would hope that that would be something that I could see on an agenda for upcoming soon. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathy. And with that, we will adjourn at 6:34. Thank you, everyone.